Meant. We can can easily take care of that. That's not a problem.
Unless you want to meet on Wednesday.
Uh, yeah, totally up to you, I guess. No, I'm just kidding. Um. Let's take a look and we can always change it at the next meeting as well. We don't even need to, you don't even need to endorse it tonight, really. I mean, we have our January schedule set up, so that's the most important. And then I think it's December third or fifth is our next meeting.
Yeah, I think we can still do it though. We can just make a note.
Yeah.
I actually have seven o'clock.
Me too.
Do you have seven o'clock?
I do.
So I'd like to start. Good evening and welcome to the Thursday.
November fifth, two thousand twenty, uh, meeting of the planning board. Um, as a preliminary narrative, this is the chairman, Stephen Boullet. Please permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative affirmative. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
Present.
Mr. Thomas.
Present.
Uh, Mr. Gordon is absent, and I believe Mr. Rotalakis will be delayed. Um, as far as staff, uh, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mr. Cahill?
Present.
Okay. Uh, so good evening. This open meeting of the Shrewsbury Planning Board is being conducted remotely consistent with government Governor Baker's March twelfth, twenty twenty executive order due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID nineteen virus. The order which you can find posted with agenda materials for this meeting allows of public bodies to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded, so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Shrewsbury Planning Board is convening by telephone conference video conference as posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. The meeting ground rules are such. We are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Uh, before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each board member or staff staff member who is the lead role for this particular item or guest speaker associated with this item on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the chair will go down the line of members first and then to staff members, inviting each by name to provide any comment or questions. I will then call upon the members to offer a motion and then for a second. Please hold until your name is called. Further, please remember to mute and unmute your phone by pressing star six or mute your computer when you are not speaking as to not trigger your camera feed or background noise. For items with public comment such as public hearings, after the members have spoken, the chair will afford public comment as follows. The chair will first ask members of the public who wish to speak to identify their names and addresses only. Once the chair has a list of all public commentators, I will call on each by name and afford three minutes for any comments. For any response, please wait until the chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. If members wish to engage in colloquy with other members, please do so through the chair, taking care to identify yourself. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by roll call, roll call vote, excuse me. So with that, we go on to our first item of business, which is to review and approve minutes. Uh, we have should have received minutes from the April second, twenty twenty meeting and the September third, twenty twenty meeting. Um, I will go around and ask if anybody has any questions or comments relative to the meeting minutes. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
Uh, no comments.
Mr. Thomas.
No comments, sir.
Um, I don't see Mr. Rotalakis on board at this time, so I will also say that I have no comments. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to accept the meeting minutes.
I move that we accept the minutes and as read by the chair.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Please state by your name. Uh, please state, yes, when I call your name, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor. Our next item of business is to review and sign bills. Um, good news is we have no bills for this month, so let's get right about that. Um, next item of business is board member comments. Um, I will go around the the table. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
No comments this month.
Mr. Thomas.
I have no comments this month.
And, uh, I have no comments either. This brings us to our first hearing. Um, it's for fifty one fifty three Bayview Drive duplex request for a de minimis change. Waterview Realty Trust, location fifty one to fifty three Bayview Drive. Do we have the applicants in? Available.
Yes. Bill, here to get here from Handigan Engineering. Um. Bernie, how do you want to hear this? You want me to just, do you want me to make the presentation or? I could just hit the.
Sorry, I just, I just got a note from Steve Rotalakis. Uh, could one of the other members please send him, text him the, uh, call and number and PIN, please?
Tim, could you do that? I have no idea how to do it.
Okay, thank you. I just just got that text. Sorry about that, Bill. Um, yeah, if you want to present, go ahead. There is on the bottom right hand of the screen, present now, and you've built a window that's already been opened.
Okay.
It's probably the easiest way.
Okay. Can everyone see what I'm showing?
Yes.
Okay, this is the revised plan that we've submitted. Um, it shows the changes that we've made, uh, and are asking for in this de minimis change. Uh, what I'd like to do is go back to, um, this is an overlay plan, uh, which we use to kind of get the ball rolling on this. Um, and what this basically shows is I had this up. So, uh, the what's in red is what was approved uh, for the deck system and I'm sorry, for the wall system in the stair system. Um, so there were the red wall, you can see coming out of here, comes along this way. So it's a it's a tiered wall system. And then there was a stair system which came in around this way with another wall up in this area here and another smaller wall down in this area here. The blue is what we're proposing to do, uh, to change the wall along with this black um, stair system in this area here. And the reason being as outlined in the letter is that this stair system became very complicated with respect to the construction and the design. Um, so in order to basically eliminate that, we figured instead of putting the stairs, integrating them into the wall, we would basically just put them on the other side of the wall, um, once it was built. And then from there, um, uh, eliminate a lot of this construction. So that goes to this plan here. Um, which shows the location of the wall and the stairs, um, that we're proposing. Um, so on the the site plan, what we have is we have that information now shown added to the plans. Uh, we repositioned the landscaping that was proposed. Uh, it was proposed on two different levels. Now it's just going to be on one level. What this allowed us to do was outline in the letter was, uh, by basically raising the wall a little bit further in this area here. We were able to eliminate the second row of, um, uh, um, um, the, uh, wall system, which did a couple of things. Um, one, there was a concern of the on on the the ability to construct the footings, uh, for the decks, uh, with the with respect to the location of the GeoGrid uh, along this area that's been resolved. Um, then the other, the other thing that was out there was just being able to, um, have a better approach uh, to the 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 grading in this area too, which has been resolved. So that that's really the major change that we're talking about for this de minimis change is the is, uh, that wall system itself is the change. Um, from there, that allows us to build the decks without, uh, any issues relative to the location of the GeoGrid and the footings for the decks uh, in either location. Um, the the second change which came as a result of our review with the, um, with the engineering department relative to the stormwater permit. Uh, if you recall, uh, the roof drains we had tied in from the rear of the building, we're going to go into a, a, uh, basically a leaching pit. Um, when we met with the, um, stormwater, uh, group, even though this is redevelopment, um, they still wanted us to basically be able to try to accommodate the, um, point eight, um, inch, um, flow that's required by the bylaw. To do that, we had to increase the size of the, uh, drainage structure system and then change it to a chamber system, which is now, um, will be constructed in this area here. Um, so another benefit of of putting the wall in this location is that the the this is now further away from the chamber system, which gives us a little bit more room um, to build it and 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 have it grade out. So that's really the second change. Um, the third change was with respect to the decks. As you can see here, we had the decks with a wraparound, uh, uh, stair system on each deck individually. When they got involved with the architectural, um, internal part of the buildings, which are mirror image, basically right in this area here, there's a window that looks out here. So these stairs will be blocking that or obstructing it, maybe not fully blocking it. So what the architect has now done is, uh, created a and a stair system, which is basically in between the two buildings, um, which works out real well. Um, this foundation is two feet above this foundation. Um, so you'd come off of the deck here, go down a few steps for two feet. And then this would, uh, mirror up with marry up with that. It would end up being the same elevation in the in the deck system. Then we'd then then go down to the grade. Um, using the stairs system that's internal to this, uh, cubby area here, which wasn't really being used for anything. Um, there will be a privacy wall and this door would be solid as far as, you know, uh, either wood or or vinyl um, on both ends, so that they would have privacy from each other for the residents, um, but still be afforded the view of the lake, um, throughout this whole area. Um, I'm just going to check my letter because I think that was really the the main thing. We changed the wall, we raised the wall, we eliminated the stair system in the wall, we put it below. We adjusted the plantings. We changed the stormwater system and we changed the deck. So that really is the the essence of the changes of the plans. Um, we still have to go in front of conservation for them to, um, give their blessing to these changes as well, but, uh, we need to get the planning board um, squared away with this stuff as well. So are there any questions?
Um, first, I'll ask Bernie, has the engineering department reviewed these, uh, proposed changes?
They have, and they have not issued me any comments. So they are okay with it and I'm, uh, okay with these changes as well. It was just substantial enough to warrant a de minimis, uh, review by the board.
Okay. Um, with that, I will go around the bend and, uh, find out if we have board member comments. Uh, I'll start with Mr. Jerry.
I know I have no comments or questions. I'm okay with it.
Okay, Mr. Thomas.
I have no questions or concerns.
Uh, Mr. Rotalakis, have you, uh, been able to connect?
I'm here. I am here.
Okay, excellent. Would you, do you have any questions or comments relative to this de minimis change?
I do not. I'm all set with it.
Okay, um, I also don't have any questions with it. I feel that the, uh, engineering department has done a thorough review and I agree that this probably falls that that this falls into a de minimis change. So I would entertain a motion to accept this as a de minimis change.
I move that we find that the requested, uh, revisions to the site plan are de minimis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, I'll go around the turn horn. Uh, Mr. Jerry.
In favor.
Mr. Thomas.
In favor.
Mr. Rotalakis.
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. So we're all set, um, to go in front of, uh, conservation.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you. You as well.
All right, thank you. Good night, Al.
Okay, our next item of of the business is Marketplace Shrewsbury request for de minimis change. Shrewsbury Maple LLC, location three seventy eight Maple Avenue. I see Miss Nichols is on online.
I am.
Would you like to please, uh, introduce yourself and bring up what you would like to do?
My name is Susan Nichols and I am representing the owner, Shrewsbury Mark, uh, Shrewsbury Maple LLC. Um, I am coming before you tonight to ask for change to the site lighting plan that was approved to by the board. Uh, when we came before the board for a site plan modification at Marketplace Shrewsbury. The, uh, plan that was approved by the board, uh, has four existing parking lot lights that are in the front of the building in the parking lot. Um, and we were adding two new poles while they're replacing Selco poles on the east side of the parking lot. Um, when we presented that photometric for that sight lighting back in where I believe, uh, we had the four poles in the front and the one directly east of the property, they were type five distribution heads. Um, and we want to change those to type four. And the reason being that a type four distribution will have, um, less direct light directly below the pole and spread it just slightly more out into the parking lot. Um, so we're trying to to just get a little bit more lighting, especially in the front parking lot in the areas where there are no, um, there's especially one parking tray that doesn't have any parking lot lights a- around on either end of it. Um, we did not change the light up in the northeast corner. That one was, um, always slated to be a type three distribution, which is just, uh, throwing light to the front of it, not behind it at all. Um, so should have very minimal impact to the, um, butters up to the north um, with this change because we're not, we're not doing anything to that light up there.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to, um, put up the photometric plan?
If you could, please, thank.
Yes, one second. Okay, so, um, this is the northeast. Can everyone see that?
Yes.
So this is the final plans as approved by the board. Um, previously, this is the northeast corner. Excuse me, of the lot with the butters to the north here. This is what was approved. I can zoom in a little bit. Um, if you take attention, pay attention to these numbers up here, um, and then on this plan, you can see, um, Susan helpfully highlighted the ones that did change. So there are only two along the actual fence on the northern portion that have changed, um, from point three and point seven to point four and point eight. Um, and then you can see similar, we're not talking major, major changes. For the most part, we're seeing one tenth of a lumen uh, being changed in these areas. And then let me scroll on down to. Oops. It froze on me. There we go. Um, these are then the other changes that you can see for the most part are going to be along Maple Avenue. Again, we're talking one or two tenths of a lumen, not an entire lumen being changed, um, in the parking lot. So those are the edges. There are some changes interior to the lot. Um, Susan did not highlight those. We had discussed it and, um, she'd have ended up highlighting most of these roads because they're all adjusting by a lumen or two. So I will let Susan answer any questions you have.
Very good. Thank you, Bernie. Uh, I'll start around, uh, the board. Um, first, I'll start with Mr. Rotalakis. Do you have any questions or comments?
I'm all set.
Jerry?
I'm also all set.
Mr. Thomas?
I'm all set.
Okay, and there is, I'm, uh, myself, I am all set as well. Um, I agree that, um, the basically is point, point one, one tenth of a lumen only in a couple of small areas close to where the, um, the fence is would probably be the one that had the most concern for me, but it's such a minimal amount. Um, I personally feel this falls under a de minimis change and, um, I would entertain a motion should the board decide to go that route.
I would move that we determine that the applicant request is de minimis.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm in favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
I am also in favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. So if you're all set, be a de minimis change, Miss Nichols.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you as well. So it's been quite an exciting last three months. We had a very short meeting on our first, uh, meeting a couple of months ago, had no meeting last month, and we are basically through our hearings at this point and now up on new business. So I guess, Mr. Cahill, would you like to talk a little bit about the, um, the OSRP update?
Right, so many of you might remember that, um, I made an announcement about a public forum about two months ago, um, for the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update. Um, we held that forum. Um, the Open Space and Recreation Plan Update Committee has been in effect since last August. Um, working on this, Jay Thomas on our, on the town, on the planning board has been, um, your representative on this committee for the whole time, um, and actually served as the chair of the committee. Um, we have, we took on board, or I say, we, the committee took on board the comments that they had from the public forums. Um, we have done a, so myself and Kevin Esposito from Parks and Recreation and Cemetery, we have done a, uh, an ADA evaluation of all the, um, parks and most of the open space lots in town. Um, so that's been completed and, um, right now what the OSRP committee is looking for is an endorsement um, from the planning board, um, for the final draft of the, um, updated plan. So, uh, this will also be presented next Tuesday to the Board of Selectmen for their endorsement. Um, and that kind of will wrap it up. It will then be submitted to the state and once approved by the state, um, as acceptable, will be eligible for various types of open space funding. So that's kind of where we're at right now with the the plan. So this is kind of where we're looking for endorsements. Um, I think Jay can speak to the efforts that have been put in by the committee members and staff. Um, being an integral part of it. And, uh, Jay, I don't know if you want to say a couple of words just about the work of the committee?
Yes, uh, so we had, um, quite a few meetings and then we had a long break in between, obviously because of COVID, but um, I'd like to say thanks to Bernie because Bernie and, uh, and Mimi and Mimi put in a lot of effort on this, on this. It was a very in-depth committee, a lot more in-depth than I thought it was going to be. It dug deep into a lot of things. I actually learned a lot in this committee. Um, so I would just like to thank Bernie for all the work he put into it because there was a lot of hours and a lot of meetings and a lot of time put into it. So thank you, Bernie. It was a lot of work on your part, not on my part, on your part.
We all played a role, Jay. We all played a role.
It was very interesting. It was very, very, I learned a lot, especially someone who's lived in town their whole life. I've definitely learned a lot about um, uh, different things that we have in town that we don't have. So, um, I think this is very good for the town. We're going to get state funding, so it'll be good. It'd be good for all, everybody involved.
Very good. I did have an opportunity to review. I mean, it's a, it's a hundred and eighteen page document, so it's it's not for the light reader. Um, I didn't, I'll be honest with you, I did not go into depth with a lot of it, but I will like to, would like to say that I think the formatting and the and the way it was laid out is, uh, very easy. It's easy to follow and and read very quickly. So, um, so whoever helped do that formatting and getting it all arranged, I think that they all did a wonderful job. And I think, um, when when the Board of Selectmen get a chance to review this, I think they'll probably agree that this, this is, this is done very, very well. So I'd like to thank, um, the committee and certainly Mr. Thomas for his participation in that committee, uh, while that was going on.
Well, I think the, uh, the formatting, Mr. Chairman, is down to the, um, Central Mass Regional Planning Commission, the CMRPC, and, uh, Mimi Kaplan, who's been our consultant this whole time. So I will extend your compliments to her.
She, she did a fantastic job. She really did. You and her reviewed that, that document word for word for word. It was, it was unbelievable, the amount of work that went into it.
Well, it shows that our, our funding that we sent to CMRPC is working in our favor this time. We have to see some actual output personally. Um, for me, at least, uh, so I thought that was pretty good. Um, is there any questions or comments around? I will ask around the board, uh, Mr. Rotalakis?
No, I just again want to, uh, thank everybody involved, uh, particularly Bernie and, uh, Jay for their efforts in this regard.
Okay, Mr. Jerry.
I would echo, uh, Mr. Rotalakis's comments. I thought, uh, everybody did a great job. It was a very well-written report, as Mr. Boulay indicated, and, uh, I thought it was very, uh, helpful to read and, uh, insightful and, uh, commend everybody on their work.
Very good. Mr. Jerry, any last comments? Mr. Thomas, I'm sorry. Did I say Mr. Jerry twice? Mr. Thomas, any last comments?
Uh, no, that's all I have to say for now. And I think, uh, just one more thing that would be very well done, a lot of work put into it. And, um, I think it's going to be people who like to do trails and things of that nature are going to see some, some definite improvements.
Okay, so I guess we can entertain a motion to, um, endorse the OSRP update for Mr. Cahill. Do we have to do it through you, Bernie, or is it just a, just a general endorsement?
Um, you don't have to do it through me. You can just have a motion to endorse.
Okay, I would entertain a motion to endorse the OSRP update. Um, that is the first.
I move that we endorse the OSRP update.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor. Hey, our next item of business is to vote on a bond release for forty Julio Drive. Mr. Cahill, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I did just want to mention, uh, letter B was originally the, um, discuss and vote on an issuance of bond for the Edgemere Crossing Project. Um, the, we weren't quite ready in time to issue it, so, um, we are going to deal with that at the next meeting. So, um, and it's not a public hearing. We don't, we don't need a vote. It's, that's okay.
I didn't, I didn't think to mention it, but.
No, it's okay. It's on it. And I just want to make sure that anyone watching is aware. Um, so the vote for this was, if you might recall, um, an additional parking area was added, um, last year at, um, this is the, I'm always going to get it wrong, Shrewsbury Nursing and, um, whatever it is. I can never remember these acronyms, SNRC.
Rehabilitation center?
That's it. Thank you. Um, so it's that parking lot that they did with the two lights and the walkway over to the building. Um, it was reviewed by me and engineering, the as-built, um, everything seemed to be in order. Um, so they requested the release of the, um, the entirety of the bond, which was approximately, I think, thirteen hundred dollars or twelve hundred dollars. Um, but if you release the entirety, we'll just, that covers it.
Okay, is there any, um, actually, I don't need to ask questions about this, but, um, actually, I would do, I'll ask around the, around the board. Any questions or comments relative to the bond release, uh, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm all set.
Mr. Jerry?
All set.
Mr. Thomas?
No questions.
And Mr. Boulay is no questions either. So I will entertain a motion to release all remaining funds for the bond on forty Julio Drive.
I move that we release the bond on forty Julio Drive.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. Next item of business is to discuss and vote on the twenty twenty planning board calendar. Um, we had a brief discussion prior to the start of this, and there is one date on the, um, agenda that is an error, and I believe, uh, thank you, Mr. Jerry, for picking this up. Uh, November third is what's listed on the agenda. I mean, on the, uh, regular meeting schedule, that would actually be November four. So if, um, if we can just have a request to have that amended in the future, it's nothing that needs to happen this in in the very moment, but so I think we can, I don't think we have to adopt this, um, or just accept it, Bernie?
Yeah, typically in the past, we've just had a vote to adopt.
Okay, uh, I don't know that there'll be any questions, but I'll ask anyways. Is there any questions regarding the calendar, Mr. Rotalakis?
I'm all set.
Mr. Jerry?
No questions.
Mr. Thomas?
No questions.
And I have no questions, questions either. I'll entertain a motion to accept the planning board regular meeting schedule with the, um, amendment to November to be reading as November four, twenty twenty one.
I move that we adopt the immediate schedule as set forth, uh, on, uh, as set forth, um, on the, uh, on the schedule that was provided with the amendment that the, uh, November meeting be Thursday, November fourth, two thousand twenty one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
Mr. Boulay is in favor as well. You have one more item of business, uh, to discuss and adjust the submittal deadline for the planning board's regular meeting for December third. Uh, Mr. Cahill, would you like to explain?
Um, yes, we only just noticed about a week ago that the submittal deadline for the December third meeting is next Wednesday, which is November eleventh, Veterans Day, and the town hall is closed. So we would like to ask the board to amend the submittal date to, um, November twelfth. So we would like to ask the board to amend the submittal date to November 12th at 4:30.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions regarding that, that change, Mr. Rotalakis?
No, I'm all set.
Mr. Jerry?
No questions.
Mr. Thomas?
I have no questions.
And I have no questions either. And just as a point of reference, I did look at next year's of Planning Board meeting schedule for that specific holiday. I didn't look at all of them, but I did look at that one. It seems to be in order, so we shouldn't have a problem. So I would entertain a motion to change the filing deadline for the December meeting to November 12th.
I move that we, I move that we extend the submittal deadline for the December 3rd, 2020 Planning Board meeting to November 12th, 2020 at 4:30 PM.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And Mr. Belay is in favor as well. That is all the items we have on our agenda for this evening. So I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, Mr. Rotalakis?
In favor.
Mr. Jerry?
In favor.
Mr. Thomas?
In favor.
And this boy is in favor. Thank you all for attending and thank you again Bernie for all your help you do.
Thank all of you.
Want to leave you behind. Emily does a lot of work for us as well. So thank you very much. Have a great evening.
Thanks, everyone. You too.
Thank you, everybody. Bye.
Bye. Bye bye.